Ready? Good afternoon and welcome to the Board of County Commission meeting. It is August 12th, 2025. Today, we're going to get our meeting started with the invocation, which is going to be led by Pastor Kiker from Hills Church in Beverly Hills, Florida. And Commissioner Davis, could you lead us into Pledge Allegiance? And if you would, please rise.
Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this community and for the freedoms that we enjoy in this country. Lord, I ask for protection over our county and our community and over this meeting. Bless those here present today, including the commissioners and the public, Lord. No matter which side of the issues they're on, may this be a peaceful meeting, Lord, and may your will be done in all decisions that are made. We thank you for your grace, your mercy, and your Son Jesus, and it's in his name that I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
This is a regular meeting of the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners since 12th day of August, 2025. In attendance are Chair Rebecca Bays, First Vice Chair Diana Finnegan, Second Vice Chair Janet Barick, Commissioner Jeff Kennard, Commissioner Holly Davis, County Administrator Steve Howard, and County Attorney Denise Diamond-Lynn.
Mr. Howard.
Just a couple items. Additional item E14, which we talked about earlier during the workshop, discussion and direction regarding BOCC approved action on March 11th, 2025, BOC meeting, City of Inverness office space. Also, there's additional information, 501 PM CPA AA pud 2025 0001, Attorney Darryl Johnson for 3 KS family, previous applicant Southworth, public input added. And it's my understanding that that's been continued to a future date, but the county attorney may want to speak to that.
The applicant forwarded an email to our staff asking that the application be continued, and they would be in contact with us about scheduling it if necessary in the future.
And have we reached out to all the parties that we know of to make them aware that this has been continued?
I believe that our Public Information Officer has done as much as he could in the short period of time to let everybody know that we possibly could. I think our social media has been activated with the information, and I believe that the growth management staff has reached out to individuals that they specifically knew intending to be here.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, motion to approve the agenda with the changes?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Davis, a second by Commissioner Finnegan.
Chair, just a clarification of that motion. Does that mean that item T1 is being pulled or?
Yes.
No, it's not. It's not being pulled. It was continued by the applicant, so it won't be heard today.
So you want that as a part of the motion to consider T1 continued? Okay, thank you.
Continued by the applicant.
Thank you. If there's no further board comments, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Board, with your indulg-- oh, well, let's go to proclamations. We have none and no time certs. With your indulgence, could we please move item E14 up? Sure. So, Mr. Howard, would you like to lead us on this target for action?
Yeah, I think what this was, was just we brought this before the board previously to seek direction to allow us to begin negotiations with the City of Inverness for office space. And it did pass successfully, 3-2, but it did pass. And staff went forward, as the city manager had indicated earlier today, to begin bringing that back. I don't have an exact date that was actually coming back, but that's just for your consideration before you today. And I think what I concur with the city manager that we need to make a decision today for them as well. You know, they've been working with us in good faith, and it's been very challenging. Like staff has said, we're, we need more space. We're doing our best to look at options, opportunities within this area, which is challenging. And this was one that came forward and that we looked at that we thought would be advantageous to the board for space. So we just want to get some clear direction based on your direction earlier this morning.
Well, Board, you're very much aware of what the conversation was at the meeting earlier today. What is your wishes and desires?
Madam Chair, I'll make the motion to not enter into a lease agreement with the City of Inverness.
And I'll second that.
I have a motion by Commissioner Finnegan, and I have a second by Commissioner Barick. Is there any further board comment?
Yes, ma'am. It would appear that just for those listening in, that we voted to begin negotiations. So we ran into a bit of a sticking point today when we found out it was going to be $11,000 a month times a very long lease. So we balked at that and would prefer to look in either existing space or potentially other space that we may end up owning, you know, versus renting. So that's, that was where we derailed, Mr. Williams. Apologies.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Finnegan.
If I may also point out, on the minutes that were provided, it does say at the request of First Vice Chair Diana Finnegan, the county administrator provided clarification prior to the vote. If I remember correctly, that clarification was because my stance was the same as it is today. But it was, we're, we're not making a done deal. It would come back to us, and that's why I think it was a 50 affirmative. Just, okay, it doesn't hurt in figuring out what that looks like. And as Commissioner Davis said, we saw what it looked like, and we may be going a different way.
All right, we have a motion on floor by Commissioner Finnegan and a second by Commissioner Barick. Is there any further board conversation?
Public.
I'll open it up, yeah. Seeing none, I'm going to open it up to the public. Would the public like to comment on this agenda item?
Good afternoon. Curtis Bryant-Lacanto. So I have a question I haven't seen addressed yet with this. Each of you guys represent a district. I understand you guys were talking this morning about locations of where your constituents can meet with you guys. Has it been explored of having an office in the specific districts? So if you guys are in Home of Sassa or Crystal River, then the constituents just go to your office in those locations, whether it's, you know, at the library or some other building there. So that's kind of what I would encourage you guys to look at if you haven't looked at it already, is the different options available with current buildings that we currently have space for. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll close open to the public.
Can I comment on this?
Commissioner Barick.
To answer you back, okay. Months ago, prior to my becoming commissioner, I suggested that to the board, that each one of the commissioners have space in their district. Since we do have buildings in each one of the districts, and there is office space available. And it was like, oh, no, we can't do that. So at this point, you know, it's not going to be brought back up as far as I know, but I do think what we discussed this morning was a positive to where we should be going, which is either to our La Canto building or maybe purchasing the building next door to this building. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Finnegan.
Commissioner Barick, I wouldn't be opposed to that. That actually could work, but for the sake of Reese not losing his mind, he would, in essence, I guess, be moved, have to move still to La Canto, and then we'd all have to go to wherever he is at some point for mailboxes and items and things. He can't, he wouldn't be expected to go to all the offices. That's why being co-located still, still may, may be the best, but I am not opposed to looking at that option. And just a reminder, as far as the building next door, if that works, that is for an ongoing plan for the state attorney's office, not for us. That's what was presented this morning.
And that does not satisfy the need for the attorney's office, so.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Kennard.
Just, just a quick comment. I would remind this board that what we heard this morning from the judges is a growing concern, not only for them, but for all elected officials, and that's security. In this building, we have a tremendous degree of security being in the courthouse. Doesn't mean that we can't have it in another building, but the more buildings that are occupied by elected officials, the higher that bill for securing those facilities grows to the taxpayers. So right now, we, we can appreciate the efficiency and get to enjoy the efficiency of the security that's here at the front entrance without having to employ our own to make sure that those meetings, when you do meet with the public, and, you know, I meet with the public out typically in coffee shops and so forth. But it is a growing concern. The, the MPO, Hernando Citrus MPO, as, as you may or may not be aware, now has an armed officer in all of our meetings. I believe that the PDC meetings should also have the same. Certainly, the overwhelming majority of the public understands the boundaries and the guidelines of participating in, in their local government, but that's not 100% unfortunately. The judges expressed an interest in that this morning, and I think we need to be mindful of that moving forward. But as far as this, this motion second goes, I'm ready to support it.
All right. Seeing no further, oh, Commissioner Davis?
Let's turn it on the vote.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries five zero.
Madam Chair, I would ask if you all might consider moving E5 up? That's the one that we, the bond issuance, and we've got attorneys here in the audience for that one.
Yes, ma'am. Anybody opposed to E5 being moved up? All right, moving on to utility debt issuance. Mr., do we have, this is a proven authorize the chairman to execute the approving resolution with Exhibit A loan agreement for the Citrus Springs 2024 assessment area and the Northwest Quadrant Water Main Assessment Area debt issuance and any other required documents at the closing.
Motion approved, E5, A and B.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Kennard and a second by Commissioner Barick. Is there any public input? Seeing none, we'll close open to the public. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Madam Chair, consistent with that, maybe if, depending on how long the meeting goes, there's some documents and things that you need to sign. I don't know if you, y'all want to take a break at some point or just?
We are going to be concise with our words today, as Commissioner Kennard told us last meeting, and we're going to roll right through this paper.
Efficient.
Thank you.
Efficient.
That's what it was.
Concise, efficient, tomato, tomato. All right, well, on to the consent.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Finnegan and a second by Commissioner Barick. Is there any public input? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. We are now open to the public. Anyone wishing to address the board, please come forward. Please state your name for the record and your address, and you will have three minutes unless you have noticed on file for five.
John Sino. I own Sino Bugs Pest Control on a termite, and I'm just here to kind of address the fertilizer ordinance. I actually had no problem keeping it the way it was. Like Ms. Janet said, BMP came in here in 2010, made everybody kind of, even that didn't have my license, that were trying to gray area fertilize, get that license. What, just a little bit about fertilizer. Obviously, you've got NP and K. Nitrogen's going to grow the blade. The P is going to keep it green. The K is going to grow the root down deep. Why it's needed. The difference between quick release and slow, or quick release fertilizer and slow release fertilizer, slow release fertilizer takes anywhere between 20 to 30% for it to start releasing. It's fully released about 45 days. Fast release usually in it within a couple hours to a week. I have no problem banning fast release fertilizers. Those are your liquid fertilizers. Those are high nitrogens. But I have a problem with the, with banning slow release. And here's where you need it, especially during your growing months, like where it's talking about June to September 30th, even though it's the rainy season, you're going to get things that called dollar spot fungus, gray leaf spot fungus. Those are actually grown out with low nitrogen. You're going to get people that have chinch bug damage that resulted, you know, that, that spring or that last fall. Our best growing season is through those months, and to grow that damage out, you need fertilizer. Where fertilizer isn't your friend is when you get into that high nitrogen because you're getting this humidity. People that are trained, especially in my field, that are licensed applicators, do not apply that at that time. They're only applying it when it's needed. And again, when it's needed, think about new construction. When people get new sod, that sod absolutely, it's going to come from a sod farm where that's grown with quick release fertilizers, but it's going to come in with fungus. That fungus is going to have to be neutralized with a fungicide. You're going to go back in because you're watering it morning, fall, or morning and evening, 15 minutes in the morning, 15 minutes in the evening. You're going to go back with potash, which is your, for your roots, that's your last one. But then you're going to have to follow it up with nitrogen to get it to root and grow. And what you're telling people is you're not going to be able to establish your new sod or grow out your damage until the fall, when you're allowed to go back to it, but then your grass is going dormant because that's when we have the cooler temperatures. If it passes where you don't have licensed applicators that are able to apply it, you're going to have unapplied, or unapplied applicators that are going to make bad applications and probably going to result to, you know, a bigger problem. And I mean, that's all I got to say is I'd rather it stay the same, but if you got to ban anything, ban the quick release fertilizer. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hello, Mr. Hicks. How are you?
I'm very well, thank you. No prejudice again. I'm a very tenacious person, though, you'll find. And as you know, I'm here about Citrus Code 249 and 065. It says the public can address you on anything that's under your jurisdiction. First Amendment also says it. I was planning on today being my last one, but I would just point out how prejudicial it is that the developer picks up the phone or sends an email and says, oh, we're going to move the meeting. Boom, automatically, we move the meeting, where we've got tens, maybe hundreds of people coming in, very intense, to talk about this. They'll come at five, maybe not even nine, you know? So I just want to point out the perception of it. But anyway, those laws say that we can address you on anything that's under your jurisdiction. On May 28th, and then again on June, July 8th, you know very well that these laws were broken and the First Amendment was violated for those people. Many interactions back and forth. Thank you all for your interactions. At the end of the day, the county attorney, if I were to say, she said that Jennings was the legislative bearing. And I would just point out for the chair, the chair, you are the decision maker. The county attorney is in an advisory role. And so at the end of the day, her advice maybe had been for the good of the county to have the least cost lawsuit or the least damage. But it broke 249, 2860115, and it broke the First Amendment. Her role really is to protect their county. Now, this meeting is administrative. What everybody's missing is this is administrative meeting. A quasi judicial meeting is a different thing. Those fall under those rules, but this is an administrative meeting. Anyway, because of these, those represent a prejudice, is what that is, toward the argument of the public. And because of that prejudice, now for the 14th time, if you count the emails, I would just ask you to do the right thing and be transparent and recuse yourself because clearly the prejudice against the public's argument is, is very obvious. Not only that, but it's illegal. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And again, I just want to close by saying I don't have any animosity toward the chair. I hope you can see my demeanor is not aggressive, and I just want transparency.
I understand your concern, but as the chair, and I, I have to be cognizant of my other colleagues with me, and I have to rely on the advice of our attorney. I'm not an attorney, so that's, that's, she's our employer.
It's just you're, you're, you're the decision maker, and so she can advise you, but at the end of it, you make the decision. And from my seat, I can only address the board chair according to the rules. All the other board members are clean on this one with respect because I can't address them. By the way, the other members are covered by 0115 because, and by the other one, 286, da-da-da-da-da, I'm so sorry, 2860112. They're allowed to say their opinion. For instance, Mr. Kennard was very, very open that, that he proposed that the DOT be allotted what they did. He's allowed to do that. However, it's different when he says that as to when you shut the public's voices down. That's what I'm here again. Thank you.
And I believe that'll be addressed today on K1.
Okay, thank you.
Hard job you guys have.
All right, Curtis Bryant-Lacanto. Two things for you guys today. I'm going to bring up the text messaging thing again because I think that's something that you guys need to look at changing. That's covered under Administrative Regulation 17 dot 10 dash 1. Without reading the whole thing, basically talks about electronic communication, mostly emails in that sentence, in that sense, but does reference text messages. And it puts the onus on the person that has those records to keep them. With emails, you guys all know that emails are automatically captured to your BOCC or even staff, county staff members, those are captured as well. But text messages, since the county can't do text messaging on their phones, that is not captured. So it's up to individuals to capture those and report those and send those in. The issue there is that it puts you guys in jeopardy of potentially breaches, puts staff in jeopardy of potential breaches of public records laws because, you know, eight years from now, someone can call up a public record and be like, hey, someone texted so, so and so on this, and you guys are by law required to keep some of those records beyond the eight year limits. And there's no capture of that. So someone can call you up and be like, hey, eight years from now, you guys have to produce your records. Also, anyone that's leaving their job, state law also says that on the way out the door, you're supposed to turn over all those text messages, all those emails, all those things to the record custodian. Again, that's a big, a lot of pressure on you guys to get that correct, as well as staff that's leaving different positions. So you guys might want to look into doing a change that addresses that to automatically capture some of those things. The second thing I want to bring up is there is conflict in your administrative regulations and your county ordinances. Administrative Regulation 3 dot 01 dash 5 talks about your communications with staff. BOCC is supposed to go to Steve Howard for everything, whether it's asking a question, whether it's getting reports, any of those things. All that goes to Steve Howard. Steve Howard then goes to staff, staff goes back to him, and then comes back to you guys. Ordinance 2 dash 208 says something similar. However, it exempts that communication for inquiry purposes. So if you have a question, the ordinance allows you guys to go to staff. So you have two conflicting ordinances. I guess one is a administered regulation, one ordinance. So just want to bring that to your attention. That's something that you guys might want to address as well at some point. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi there.
Hello, Tony O. Pine Ridge. Okay, well, as you remember, last meeting, I advised the board to please do some serious educating themselves in the hydrological features of this area. Okay, because it's very important. It's going to be coming up in the next several hearings. So that's of consequence. I was taken aback when I'm in my research dealing with the proposed say and mine, and I'm surprised that the land, I guess the PDC, did not stop this process beforehand when the law is clear. And I'm questioning what's going on. Is, is that department just secretarial? Because every information that I present to them, that she said, CO2 says, well, we passed it on. We passed it on. Did they even read it? That's the question. I mean, this is alarming information, and it should have actually been stopped before it ever got to the special master's hearing. I have with me right now an email that just came in yesterday from Swift Mud that says the, their ERP has not been finalized. It's, they're still investigating, so I don't see any reason why we would even have a hearing on this because if Swift Mud hasn't said and is going to deny it, which they should, there really would be, this would be a moot point for us to even be going through any kind of motions here. Okay, that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, hello there. How are you tonight?
How are you today?
Good.
I've spoken to Ms. Bays and Mr. Kennard about this.
Could you give us your name and address for the record, please?
Kenneth Ferguson, Floral City. And I've talked to Mr. Landon at the Planning and Zoning. It appears that on page 3, Day 3, Chapter 3 of the Plan LDL, your Planning and Zoning Court, that to me, there's a statement in there that's ambiguous. The Planning and Zoning Department and Zoning Department has interpreted one way, and I interpreted another. I've had two brokers interpret the other. And what it amounts to is they've interpreted that no accessory structure can be built on a lot that doesn't have a house on it. Okay? I understand in the past, there was an issue with that. Okay? Squatters coming on places and causing problems. But what you're doing with that is punishing legitimate people that want to get a permit to put something on a vacant lot that's next to where they live. Okay? And it also has followed, they're saying that that can be cured by getting a unity of title. But in sub-subdivisions, if you get a unity of title, you're severely restricted by this unity of title, and it may go against the deed restrictions of the community. You may be able to, the restrictions that are in the Land Development Code may be less than what the deed restrictions are. So you couldn't build anything on it. So whether it's, I've made a recommendation to Mr. Landon, and he has the stuff to do it. Whether it changes my way or not, it ought to be put in there clearly what's intended. So once somebody reads it, it can't be interpreted two ways. Okay? The way I interpreted, and two brokers I talked to, that the use of a property is determined by the Land Development Code, not when a permit's issued for that property. And so that way, if you interpret it that way, you can build a shed on a property without a unity of title. If you interpret it the way the Planning and Zoning Board, and I understand why they interpret that way, I have no problem with it. It says you can't build one on it. And either way, it ought to get clarified. The other thing I brought up to them is the proliferation of putting unpermitted sheds on property, and they just put one after the other. So you've got three unpermitted sheds that are to be put on a property, and nothing you can do about it under the code now. And I've made a suggestion to Mr. Landon about how to cure that, as well as mine.
Thank you, Mr. Kenneth.
So I thank you for your time, and hopefully we'll get it resolved one way or another. I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kenneth. Is there anyone else wishing to address the board? Seeing none, we'll close open to the public. Commissioner Barrett?
Kenneth, it depends on what your land actually is. If you live in a PUD that has deed restrictions, then you have to abide by the PUD deed restrictions, and they go sometimes above and beyond what the building codes are for the county. So like where I live in Citrus Springs, if you have a piece of property, unless you have a house on it, you can't put a shed on it. And you can only have a certain-sized shed. So you have to check to see what your property actually is. Does it have deed restrictions? And find out who has a copy of them, so you can read them and see what you can and can't do on the property you own. But most of the time, you have to have a house on the property that you want to put a set, an ancillary building on. And that was decided by the board a couple of years back.
Commissioner Kennard?
Yeah, a couple of things to address. Yes, Mr. Ferguson, we have been in communication. I've spoken with Eric about this issue. And I, my suggestion to Eric was that he and I and Ms. Lynn and Ms. Cottu sit down and have a conversation about this accessory dwelling on an abutting lot that does not have a primary structure on it. I don't know if there's a path forward there, you know, without having unity of title. But I think getting, having those three people at the table together, look and see if there's a way that we can find it, you know. One, one thing that we have got in our LDC, and it recently surfaced, is that somebody can put a boat dock on a vacant lot that they own without a primary structure on it, provided it's within 100 or 150 feet of a lot that they have their primary structure on. But there has to be, there can't be a budding, right? Or however it's written, they can't be next to each other. So if there's a lot in between, or maybe a road in between, or something in between the lots, then they can build, they can build a dock there. That one has a bit of a, that does have a history to it. It's got a bit of a pet name to it. But anyway, that is in the LDC. So I don't know if there's a path forward. I certainly don't want to promise anything, but we are going to have a conversation and see if there is, see if there's a way that we can address this. Not just specific to his situation, but going forward. If somebody, somebody has a lot with their primary structure on it and wants to, wants to build an accessory structure on the lot next to it, is there a way that we can make that happen and not create problems down the road? Something that would come up possibly in a title search if that second lot was sold, but we'll see. And Mr. Bryant brought up the idea of having, having communications with staff without going through Mr. Howard. I have, I've had a lot of concern with that, not so much in gathering information from staff, but ultimately giving staff any direction that is not board direction. There's, there's a big difference between reaching out to one of the directors and saying, hey, do you know, when, do we have an idea of when this project is going to be done? Or is this sewer project ready to be connected to? That type of thing. It's just gathering information in a more efficient manner. Directing staff to do something as an individual commissioner is inappropriate if it has not come before this board. So that would be the difference. Maybe there does need to be some clarification there to make sure that any communication with staff is just an information gathering and not giving direction the other way. So anyway, those will be my comments.
Madam Chair.
And John Sino, thanks for being here. Is John still in the room? Anyway, John, thanks for being here and bringing up the information, possibly where the fertilizer ordinance may need to be tweaked. I don't know. It sounds like it warrants some additional conversation.
Commissioner Davis?
I concur and follow exactly what Commissioner Kennard just said about staff. For efficiency's sake, you know, I have someone email me a question. I reply to that person, and I copy whoever is the director in charge of that department that can get the answer. But I also copy Mr. Howard and Ms. Rodriguez. So they are always kept in the loop, but they have one less thing on their plate. It's just efficiency. But, and sometimes I come up with ideas, but I say, this is absolutely, you know, I'm just asking for ideas and things like that. But then I will go to Mr. Howard to have a conversation, and I never direct staff, ever. So, and the other point, in my briefing yesterday, I have long, long, long begged for us to have texting on county devices. Things like, people are in a meeting, someone's running late, they're not checking email, they're not picking up a phone, right? A quick text to say, you know, I'm inbound in five minutes or whatever, is incredibly appropriate and a good use of cell phones. Mr. Howard told me, he tried to call a couple of people on his county mobile, and they literally said, I don't check voicemail, text me. So in my briefing yesterday, I asked Madam Attorney to bring that back on my agenda at the next meeting. Thank you.
Commissioner Finnegan? With Mr. Sino, I would like to know more information. And I think it's more specific to the point. I mean, with anything in code, I mean, how are we going to enforce all of these things? I mean, whether it's on a fertilizer ordinance, whether it's on this new commercial, you know, construction, and they're supposed to have certain landscaping. I mean, are we keeping up? And how are we enforcing? And what are we going to do? And so those are some of, that's my, my point to that. And then as far as Mr. Bryant, do we actually, is this conflicting with the AR and the ordinance? And if it is, can we fix it? He referenced, there's an AR on communication, then we also have an ordinance, and I guess they conflict one another, was his point. Maybe we can take a look at it?
I can look and see if they, they conflict. I think Commissioner Kennard made the distinction between, I think the ordinance says that you can gather information.
Okay.
Whereas the AR says you're not supposed to. But I'll look at them.
Okay. And then I agree with the texting. I think, I would rather it be on our county cellphone. I think everybody would be way more cognizant if you're going to do any texting, and then it's captured, and that just eliminates it. And then I think we're going to talk about quasi-judicial on Mr. Kennard's agenda later. So, moving on.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve E1B through E1K.
I have a motion by Commissioner Barrett.
Second.
And I have a second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any public input?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair. Did she say B? Did we get rid of A, and I missed that?
We did A.
I don't believe so.
No, we didn't. It's E5.
Yeah, we did E5, Commissioner Barrett, not.
Okay, I'm sorry. Change that to E1A through E1K minus E5.
No.
E5's not part of E1.
We haven't gotten to E5 yet.
Yeah.
We're doing.
We're just on 1.
A through K.
A through K.
Second.
Okay.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Barrett, a second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any public input? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Madam Chair, motion to approve E2.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Davis and a second by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any public input? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Motion to approve E3.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Davis and a second by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any public input? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Motion to approve E4.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Davis and a second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any public input? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Motion to approve E6, A and B.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Finnegan and a second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public input? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Motion to approve E7.
I have a motion by Commissioner Davis and a second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any public input? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Motion to approve E8.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Finnegan and a second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public input? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Motion to approve E9, A, B, C, D.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Davis and a second by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any public input? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Motion to approve E10.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Davis, a second by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any public input? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Motion to approve E11.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Davis and a second by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any public input? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Motion to approve E12.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Barrett and a second by Commissioner Davis. Is there Well, hello.
Hello. How are you guys tonight?
Good. How are you?
I'm glad to hear that. On the Stephen Schwartz, Pine Ridge, on this issue, I have three questions. Is this to have them bring a show to Citrus County to bolster tourism? If it is, and it's under tourism, I'd like to know why the chamber is not paying for that, especially since, number three, they get a lot of money coming from our gas tax, and none of, ever get, other than tourism, doesn't really get diverted back to things like infrastructure, et cetera, which is why we're moving forward if the referendum gets on the ballot for a 1% or 1 cent sales tax, whichever it's going to be. But I'd like to know why we're paying for it as a board, or I should say, the community, as opposed to it coming out of tourism. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Davis?
It is coming out of the tourism tax. It does, has absolutely zero effect on residential taxes. Zero. Motion to approve, or, no, we didn't vote yet, sorry.
If there's no other public input, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Motion to approve E13.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Davis, a second by Commissioner Barrett. Is there any public input? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
A little too efficient myself. I have a few updates here for you today, commissioners, just a few. So I'll get right to it. We have this year's road resurfacing very close to being completed with that. So we are currently 121 roads, excuse me, out of 138 have been completed, which is about 88%. We are expecting that that total completion will be within the next one to two weeks. So we anticipate coming back to you with a completion at the next meeting.
Wow.
Deltona scot resurfacing, we have held a pre-construction meeting. That is complete, and we are pending some submissions from the contractor, as well as a notice to proceed. And the target completion for that at this time is the beginning of next fiscal year, 10/1/25. So just a month and a half or so. Turner Camp scot resurfacing, the asphalt friction course is being laid this week, and thermoplastic striping will follow that likely the week after. The target completion for the Turner Camp project is the 27th of August. Course of ex-staffing for July was at 89.89%, which is up from 83.42% in June. The Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council's vulnerability assessment, that is tentatively on your August 26th agenda for final approval of the LMS, which will include the vulnerability assessment within that plan. And last but not least, we have a new project on the list, which is the Landfills New Citizen Service Area, which your board just voted to approve E9, which will allow us to move forward with the land swap that we need in order to complete that project. So once we get that land acquisition completed, we will draft a swap agreement and bring it back to the board. Any questions?
Not necessarily for you, but Mr. Howard, on the vulnerability assessment from the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council, if that's going to be completed, are we kind of in the queue to start identifying projects that we could potentially get funding for?
I think we've been looking at that already. Yes, we have been doing that.
And upon the completion of that vulnerability assessment, we will be eligible for resilient Florida funding.
Yeah, we're, we're building a list.
Rosello Trail.
Yes.
Just saying.
We've been having discussions on that, and a variety of others.
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Kennard?
I've got not so much a question, but a request. Thankfully, it looks like our offshore reef should be moving forward. Is that September or October that they're planning to deploy?
The reason that I did not have an update for that item today is because we still have not received the completion, or the deployment date for that contractor.
Okay.
So as soon as we get that date, we will share it with you. I know it might be tricky to deploy during hurricane season, but my understanding is that we're looking at as soon as we can get the vote here.
Yeah, I think they're planning on next 30 to 60 days deploying. Do you know offhand how much material? I mean, I know it was a guess. It was a...
Carlton may have an answer.
That's a massive amount of material. It's a massive amount of material.
Chair, Commissioners, so what we did when we went out to bid, we had a certain dollar figure we were trying to match. So when we requested the bids from the contractors, we went by the tonnage. So we're gonna be able to put out everything we can with the amount of money we currently have.
Okay.
And, and from the last update I received, it looks like the date's gonna be in October.
In October, great, very good. So my, my request, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I just, I just don't want him to leave.
Oh. My, my request is that thankfully, with, with that project finally coming true to fruition, can we put the inshore reef project on our, on our list of updates? Just to keep an eye on it. I know that we're a ways off on those yet, but there were 12, 13 sites located for the Reef Ball projects, and I'd like to make sure that we keep, keep our foot on the gas there.
Just to add some context to that project, the inshore reef is currently being tracked, although there has been less movement, so therefore less updates to you all. But yes, absolutely, once we get that offshore reef moving in full swing, the inshore will be the next that we can focus on.
Great, thank you.
Just one second. And Carl, since we talked about Scott projects, and we talked about Deltona specifically, where are we with the POPCA? I know that the money through the state was July 1, and then our funding, so, but are we, how quick will it?
We've already got all of our documents sent over to the state, so they're, they received their funding July 1. We're just waiting on them to return our documents to say it's a go. So we've, we've already transmitted everything to them that they need.
Do you think it'll be done by year end?
Kind of doubt it. Depends on how quickly the state moves.
All right.
I had one question about the reef project that we are hopefully getting near, and when did it really start? What year?
I'm sorry, which project were you referring to?
The reef project that's coming to an end?
That, I know that it was put onto our outstanding commission list in 2021 or 2022.
I asked for a history on this project a little bit, and started in 2010.
Yeah.
So part of that product was actually the Highway 19 Bridge. I've got a whole list of when that started, but when it first took off was 2010. It was actually at one point, previous boards, because of the downturn economy, a grant was defunded, as well along the way with that history, so it just kind of shows you how long this takes, so this is exciting, but data that I have shows 2010.
Okay, 'cause that's what I wanted to know, you know, it's been going and going and going like an Energizer Bunny, and never getting to the end.
Absolutely.
So it's nice that you're finally, we're finally gonna get to an end on this one, so we can start the next ones that have been on the list probably almost as long.
Yes, absolutely. We're very excited to be breaking some of that backlog.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Davis.
I have four words, strategic plan, Steve, Howard. Actually, maybe two more, since you're doing all the tracking.
Thank you.
Veronica Campschar.
I have two words, Team Citrus.
Add a team.
Team Citrus, but it really is, what you measure, it gets done, and, and I compliment the board, give us your targets for action. I'm gonna have, we're gonna have a lot of fun on Thursday talking about 31 months into this. You're gonna see a video, you're gonna see progress, and what gets measured gets done is because of Team Citrus, it's leadership here, it's community, it's everybody, but what gets measured gets done. This isn't by, we're not marking time, we're actually making a difference, and you see that when you strategically focus, you get a lot done. Instead of talking about problems, we're trying to solve problems. A lot of people are good at talking about problems, explaining problems, we gotta solve problems, and that's what we're seeing with this board and our, and Team Citrus.
And you are rightfully putting the praise on your team, which is what a good leader does, but culture flows from the top, so it's my job as one of your five bosses to give you an attaboy. Embarrassed or not, you get it.
And if I may, Vice Chair, just since the chair stepped away, a POPCA is being tracked in Achieve It, and I will ensure that it is added to the list as well, so you get regular updates.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, one last little bit of information. Commissioner, you made comment about how much this has been talked about, and, and I have been talking about this since I got here in 16. One of the big holdups on this, one of the most time-consuming holdups, has been getting that restore funding through a very, very long, dogmatic process. And finally, that, I believe that, that funding had been released, getting the permits for expanding our footprint out there, that took years. Thankfully, that just happened last year. So there's, nobody's been more frustrated about it than I that it's taken this long, but thankfully, thankfully, we're getting there. And something, little tidbit of, of information that, that you might enjoy or appreciate is Florida Sportsman Magazine is a, is a widely circulated, widely read fishing outdoors magazine amongst boaters, fishermen, saltwater fishermen around the state, and Southeast US, I would say, probably. Well, they did back, was it 30, 30, 35, 36 years ago now, maybe?
2001.
Was it?
2001, I have the article.
Oh, was it?
I have the, I have the article.
Okay, so it wasn't that long, 20, it was only 24, 24 years ago. They did a story on the initial deployment of material out there to Fish Haven 1. We made the front cover of the magazine, great article, and I've been in touch with the editor of the magazine, and he's very interested in the timeline of this, and is actually gonna try and make it up to go out on a boat with us when they're deploying the material, and do a follow-up story to the expansion of the reef. So that'll be, that'll be tremendous promotion for, for the expansion of our reef out here, so we'll see. I'm excited about it. Thank you, Veronica.
Thank you all.
Thank you both. Mr. Howard, do you have anything?
Other than just the follow-up, we're looking forward to Thursday, the progress report with the strategic plan. This is just really a check-in, we're not asking you to come up with any new targets for action, disprepares us, and then also the legislative priorities. Obviously, a lot's going on in Tallahassee, and obviously, this session's gonna be a little, gonna be interesting at best, but we want to be prepared to make sure we're getting feedback from this board, but also trying to tie these into our budgeting process, and also, we have some new processes in place with our local folks as well, moving this forward. So it's gonna be a little bit different approach that we're doing internally, to get a lot of feedback and input from staff, so we're looking forward to Thursday. That's all I have, thank you.
We are, no presentation, so Commissioner Davis. Commissioner Davis.
I have the problematic medical examiner board tomorrow, so I'll have more to report in two weeks. We'll see how that goes. Oddly, Madam Attorney has not heard like we should have had supposedly where we left it, where all, all the attorneys were working together to hammer out some sort of agreement, but it's been crickets. But I forwarded the agenda to both you and Mr. Howard. They're both accompanying me tomorrow to help deal with this madness and inefficiency in government. That's all I have, thank you.
Commissioner Kennard. Mr. Hicks is anxiously...
Okay.
Wait, we can't, we're, we're done with open to the public right now, but we will have it one more time by the end. You're okay.
You, you have another chance.
You'll get one more chance at it.
All right, so I'm gonna start off with a couple of the easy things. I, I have been remiss in not bringing it to the board and public's attention. Thankfully, The Chronicle's been running stories on it, KCCB, Keep Citrus County Beautiful has been putting it out wherever they can on social media. Save Our Waters Week is coming up, September 20th through the 27th. There's an awful lot of information that's, that's available, different events, learning events, experiences, boat rides, tours, things like that, that are available to the public. That, I believe the 20th is a Saturday. They, they kick off the week with a coastal cleanup. If anybody is interested in participating, or if they're interested in putting a, a group, if a, a social club or a community group is interested in putting together a group of people to participate, make sure you go on Keep Citrus County Beautiful website, it's kccbinc.org, and there's a form there, a release form, if you will, that needs to be filled out and submitted well in advance. They've got all the information online. Put together your group, or if individually you want to participate, get on there, fill the form out, get it submitted, and look at all of the different events that are, that are available to the community during that week. The, the folks, the folks that put this together really put an awful lot of effort into it. I don't want to say throughout the year, but it is pretty close to throughout the year that they're meeting, talking about this planning next year's event, and it all, it all comes to a head September 20th through 27th, so please participate in that. I recently had, had quite a meeting with a gentleman who's very involved with big projects, both residential and commercial, not in Citrus County yet, but puts together some big stuff, has put together, has a track record putting together big stuff around, around the state. And I asked specifically about manufacturing. You know, when, when he asked what it was that Citrus County is lacking, you know, what are we looking for? And my comment, you know, at that time was, we're getting plenty of interest in residential construction. We're getting some increased tick in, interest in commercial development. What we lack is manufacturing. And it was interesting, his, his comment back to me was, was one word, and then he followed it up, of course, with some discussion, and his word was certainty, that companies that, that are in the manufacturing business naturally have got a multitude of options, not only around the state, but around the Southeast in the United States, that every county wants manufacturing. What they're looking for, we, we hear it, we use the term, or the phrase an awful lot, it's the time value of money. What they're looking for is when they submit an application to bring their facility here, they want to know that application's gonna be handled in a timely manner, and how long, you know, it comes down to a calculator, it always does. How long is it gonna be before they can be up and running? Their cost of money, interesting enough, you know, when we look at the interest rates, what are, what bond rates are and so forth, he told me their cost of money right now, these, these manufacturing facilities is approaching 12%. And so there's a major difference between them submitting an application and it finally coming out of the, the bowels of the government building 12 months down the road, or 16, 16 months down the road, versus 30, 60, or 90 days down the road. And so if they can calculate that, they can figure out exactly whether or not this is the right location for them, can they afford to come here, how long's it gonna take them to turn that around and start producing some revenue? So certainty was the one, was the one word that he used. What I've come back with from that meeting and had a conversation with, with Steve Howard about the idea of a liaison in, in permitting and, well, I would say, in the permitting department, is these applications of major significance in the community, whether, whether it's a, a mixed-use development where you've got a significant number of residential units, all of the commercial that goes with it, whether it's, you know, smaller residential commercial or, or more major commercial development. I would like to see, I would like to see Steve have a, or Eric have a liaison that is not going to sidetrack anything, but more fast-track. I want somebody to have their hands on that and say, all right, review this, this needs to be checked out. If there's any issues with it, let's get it addressed, get it back to the applicant, and then that liaison is taking it to the different entities within the county building that needs to review it. And then the county can have a goal of getting that out of the county building in 30 days, or 60 days, 90 days, whatever that number is. These applications, when they come in, it's, and again, we're not gonna cut corners, I will still want the right people to review it, it still has to meet our land development code, but I, I want to be able to say, when somebody comes in with an application of, of major significance, that they can count on that application being out of the county building in this period of time. If we give that certainty, and again, I don't think, from what, from talking to this individual, it doesn't sound like there's much of a difference between 30 or 90 days. They just want to know what that number is, so that they can get from staff, these are the rules of the game, this is, this is when this application's gonna come out of here, and then they can, they can count on that. That's a certainty that they're looking for. So I would like to see, it's not, it's not on our agenda to vote on today, but I would like to see some consensus from this board to give Steve direction, to put together that team of, maybe it's a team of four or five people, one person from each, from each department that has to review those applications, and then one liaison to walk, walk hand, with hand on that application through the process. So I'd like to see if there's any support for that, for the board, and then we stay out of it, let Steve come back with what he has put together.
You absolutely have my support.
Ditto.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barrett.
We already have a process. We've gone to lengths to get everything online, and every time I talk to somebody, everybody is confident that everything is in place, all they have to do is follow the computer, and it's a one, two, three, four. If you are a manufacturer, you know it's gonna take a certain amount of time, whether you manufacture in Citrus County, or Marion County, or any other county, anywhere in the United States. And for us to be able to say, oh, well, it's only gonna take them 90 days, why? Every manufacturer plans. They don't plan on building tomorrow, they plan on like three years from now. This is what they do. So for us to be hiring someone else to do what we already spent the money to get all of this online for, I don't see any reason to be doing that. You know, we talk about streamlining, we talk about cutting things down, it is there. And to, to go out and spend more money, I don't, I don't think so.
Thank you for your input.
I would assume this would be paid out of the enterprise fund, correct, from the building?
I think I can do this internally. I think, I don't think there's gonna be much expense. I think there's some opportunity to shift around a little bit.
If it's set up the enterprise fund, because it is part of the building division, then you have my support. If it's general fund money, I would maybe take a pause on it. But I feel like it should be paid out of the, the building.
Yeah, we, we could look at that and see what I need. I, I've got some thoughts, me and the Commissioner had had some discussions, and, and I think internally, we're already thinking about, I almost call it like a task force kind of group, but as you're kind of moving these at a certain threshold and things like that, so I think we have some staff already internally that are doing that, but it's more, when it gets to a certain level for consistency, I, I've got some thoughts on that I can bring back to you at some point, but if I can have discretion to come up with that plan, I'll, I'll bring it back to you.
Well, Commissioner Kennard, I mean, you're just looking for consensus, that's my thoughts, but I definitely want to hear the exploration of it, and then whatever it comes out, but that's, my will is to not have this general fund paid for, but if it's just a process to move people around, or the building division is, you know, it's within their green light, but whatever you bring back, you, from me anyway, green light to at least make that exploration.
I, I completely agree, and I, I will tell you, this is not reinventing the wheel. This is done elsewhere, where communities are very successful at attracting manufacturing and other high-level commercial enterprise, which, as we saw this morning, we had better be looking at how to attract that. So there's, there, there are some communities that was suggested, and actually, this was brought to me probably two years ago now, there are some communities around the country, these folks that do projects nationally, that actually charge a premium for that service that would help to go towards covering some of the costs of that. But, you know, if the normal process might be $4,500 or $4,700, that, that the premium to, to getting that liaison's hands on it through the process might be $7,000, whatever, whatever that might be. I'm not suggesting that at this point.
So it might pay for itself.
Yeah, it could, could be, yeah. But that, those, those practices are already in place elsewhere. Those are, there are people that Steve can reach out to, or this board individually could reach out to, to say, hey, tell me how you guys did this here to make it work to attract manufacturing. We have gotta, we've gotta be focused on that. The residential, obviously, is coming, some of the commercial's coming. We've been told we don't have enough commercial. But the manufacturing is where we're lacking, and that's really where ultimately we can see that, that change, that trajectory that we saw this morning, we can see that turn around by attracting some real manufacturing. So my suggest, you know, my ask of the board today is just give consensus, to have him come up with a plan and bring it back to us. He's not gonna do anything on his own without it coming back to this board for further discussion.
You on the floor?
Yes, sounds like you've got consensus. Yes, sounds like you've got consensus.
Commissioner Barrett.
Okay. Holder Light Industrial Park is a project that's been on whatever for God knows how many years. And it's through the Duke Energy people and stuff. They know that there has to be certain things done prior to them being able to build. But they also had a plan to do things. So when you're asking for this, you know, fast, 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 they know there is a timeline, it is in place. When we finally get things done with Mr. Cheek's department and get everything up to where it needs to be, I am sure that that light manufacturing will come, because I am sure that they are tired of paying taxes on property without getting any money back, any revenue back. So, you know, I can see what you're saying, that, you know, but unless, and I agree with Commissioner Finnegan, unless you have a liaison person from the building department, because that's who it is, it's the building department. It's not us, it's the building department, and they are enterprise fund. And if they feel that they need somebody to do that liaison, then they should say, okay, we need somebody, it's going to be paid for through the enterprise fund, because we see the need for it, not the administration. We, if it's going to come that way, I would agree with that. I got no problem with that. But most of the manufacturers know in advance how long it's going to take. So to try and make some sort of fast-track, you know, but if you want a consensus, we, you know, you want to get some information, get some information.
K1. First of all, I have to give props to the, the bookend at the other end of the dais for bringing this forward previously. When Commissioner Davis had, had brought this forward to consider changing our, our policy as far as how we handle the quasi, quasi-judicial hearings and our communication with the public, with the applicant. Prior to the hearing, I wasn't, I wasn't terribly crazy about the idea of filling out a form every time somebody tried to communicate with me about this. It, you know, it's certainly a lot easier to say, our policy is, we can't communicate about this until, until the hearing. A recent application, you know, we get, we get emails on, on most of the applications. The application that was this sand mine that was supposed to come to us this afternoon, I think we all got a mountain of emails, some of them, many of them, I should say, individually written, and very thoughtful input on what their position was, either, either for or against the sand bed. And so I think that I, I would like to see this ordinance brought back to us. I'd like for us to, to get to a place where, where Commissioner Davis was trying to get us to, I believe, the last time, where we can have these, these communications, both with the applicant as well as with the public. We just have to make sure that we're documenting it properly, so that we're not in violation of any of our quasi-judicial, I guess, statutes. So if there is, again, if there is, if there's a majority of the board wants to see that, then.
You'd like to make a motion, I'll second it for discussion.
I, I don't, I don't have, I don't have anything here to vote on, other than just consensus to direct the attorney to bring it back to us.
Commissioner Finnegan.
So my stance has always been, I want to hear from the public. I do not want to walk into any hearing and not be well-informed, and that means my own. If I have questions about karst topography, or how sewer works in an area, I want to go find that information. I don't want to walk into here and say, I can't hear from the public, I couldn't hear from anybody, I can't ask questions, and then I'm supposed to make a major decision on behalf of the people that we represent. It's not right. So I know the problem has come up. Well, how are you going to meet with everybody? And then if you meet with the developer, how many citizens? So for me, and we, we could make this part of the ordinance or not, we could make it individual. Right now, the, most of the general public emails us. I feel like it will protect me if I take the same stance with a developer. You want me to know certain information, just email it to me. You want me to see a graph? I don't, I don't know that it would behoove me to meet with a certain entity and not everybody out of the public. So for me, I might just keep it very fair. That way, I don't have any problems. I don't have to worry about disclosures. It's all in public record. I don't know if, you know, usually they come in like A, application, AA, whatever. You know, if, I don't know if IT can look at all our emails for the correct heading, or maybe it would say Tuscany Ranch, and the, or maybe the application. And then if we knew the application, or the, the heading is not, like it's a weird, maybe we could forward that and change, change the title. I'm not really sure. I think it's a very easy way that we can get all the information we want, put it in public record, have it all out there. We're going to have to worry about that. And then if we have a form, if something's outside of that realm a little bit, then you can document, document, document.
I think that's probably a question, that's probably a question for our attorney. Depend, you know, it would depend on what state law dictates. You know, I see what you're saying, you've got, you've got all the information in email, that's all public record there. But state law may still say you have to fill out a form that, you know, that explains what it was you talked about, or I don't know, if it's in an email, do you still have to fill out the form?
I would say if it's in an email, and the email that was, is received, and if there is any email sent, that both of those would be made part of the record. Because that's the purpose of the, the form, is to document any communications. So if there, if the communication exists in written form, that basically would substitute for the, for the form. Because the form is more for in-person meetings.
Sure.
So that you can have, put in the record what you talked about and who you talked to.
Is that satisfying?
I, I think it's great, because I would be nervous then on the other side to meet with the developer, and then, you know, I'm, I'm given maps, or I'm giving information. I'm going to disclose everything, but what if you forget one thing?
Right.
You know?
Right.
So I feel like if, just email me everything if you want to communicate with me. Anybody out there can look at it the same way I can, keeps me clean and well-informed.
So we have, sounds like we've got consensus to direct the attorney to bring this back?
I agree.
Commissioner Davis?
Just for grins, we have hundreds of people that are upset about some pending case before us. Does that put us in legal jeopardy if we physically do not have the time to meet with every single person who asks for an in-person?
I would say that you are going to endeavor to meet with whomever you can in the time that it allows you, that you, that you have.
I, I have no problem, for example, going to one of our libraries and saying, all y'all can just come down there and bend my ear for an hour, you know, and then document it that way. But one-on-one meetings, there's just not, there's not enough me to go around already to do this enormous job. So I just don't want to put us in legal jeopardy. I am all for this. Otherwise, I'm just, I'm just trying to see around corners.
There's, there's not a lot of case law that addresses what happens after you adopt one of these types of ordinances.
Right.
There's different circuit court cases, which are not published, that have happened around the state that, that I hear about, just in legal circles. But as far as published cases that, you know, that stand as precedent, there's not a lot of them. So the unique circumstances that come up, we're just, we're going to have to address them as they come up.
Madam Attorney, or Madam Chair, may I?
Yes, Commissioner Finnegan.
To Madam Attorney, just to keep any of us, and including Commissioner Davis, out of potential hot water. I know, uh, meeting with people is wonderful, but I would be fearful for myself to have some sort of a town hall or group setting at a library for an application, because I would hate for all these different parties to show up. I don't want to be accused of I'm hearing this. You, you know, like, I'm, I'm hearing it, I'm hearing both sides. Like, I, would that be a problem? I mean, I, I feel like then, are we holding individual meetings before the meeting? That would make me a little nervous. That's why I kind of said email, just then everybody can see everything at all times.
I think you all have your own personalities and your own ways of doing things. Perhaps you, one of you tries something like that, and maybe it works, maybe it doesn't. Then maybe you don't do it again, or maybe it's great and you continue to do it. I think that as long as you are truly opening it up to whomever wants to speak, that you're not shutting anyone down that wants to approach you. I've never seen it done before, but I'm not to say that I can legally tell you, you shouldn't do it.
So there, there's that.
And thanks for the shout-out, Bookend.
I just want Mr. Hicks to like me again.
Not sure we can make that happen, but we can try.
Make it part of the ordinance.
Commissioner Cannard, did you have something?
Yeah, I got K2.
Okay, I thought, did you have something you wanted to say?
So what I've been doing currently, if I read something and it starts to say this thing, I have a separate folder that I send that email to, and I just send thank you for your concern to the people, just to show that I've got. So both things would go into a quasi-judicial. My little thank you, and the other one, and then I would be able to read, instead of just being able to thank you for your concern, and having to read it like I did today.
The, the avenue is there.
Okay.
If you want to receive ex parte communications, you can. If you don't, you don't have to. I'm sure, like I said, you all have your own personalities. Some of you might not want to entertain ex parte. But if you want to, you can, and follow this, and yes, both of those would be put into the record.
Okay, so that, I agree with that. Thank you.
I want to know why Commissioner Cannard's next item on marijuana says K2, because we all know that's. I want to know if that was on purpose.
Soon as I said that, I went, oh, lord.
So I'm, so I'm, so I'm bringing something back to you, an ordinance and a form.
Yes.
So I'm such a big nerd, I don't even know what K2 is.
We're not, let's not.
I don't know what K2 is.
Don't go down that road.
Just for the record, I don't know what K2 is.
There's a couple of innocent ones, okay, just saying.
It's an agenda item.
It's fake, like fake marijuana. I don't, is it even legal anymore? They would sell it at like gas stations. It was kind of like potpourri. I think people would like eat each other's faces when they would get high on it. It was really terrible. It's terrible, 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 terrible stuff.
She went there.
Yes, so.
I think it was Y2K, what I recall. All right, as we digress from being.
Yes, we did. No, you did.
Moving on.
So once, once the medical marijuana cards began getting issued around the state and around our county, the, surely I'm not the only one who has taken notice of the proliferation of dispensaries that have popped up. The state statute allows us to set a distance, set a, a limit for how close they can be established to schools. There aren't many things that we can control about them, but we can control the distance that they are to schools. It's my own personal belief that, that there are plenty of dispensaries in the county to handle the, the medical needs of those who, who have chosen or who need to have gotten their medical marijuana cards. There are plenty of dispensaries to serve their needs. It's certainly not a slight on anyone who's realizing the benefits with the use of medical marijuana. But what I don't want to see is, when you travel to some of these, some of these areas where recreational marijuana has, has become the, the law of the land in that area, is these, these smoke shops or dispensaries seemingly on every corner. So my personal belief is that Citrus County, we've got enough of those dispensaries to serve those needs. We're allowed to, we're allowed to control the establishment of any others, a certain distance from schools. And so I'd like to see us take another look at that ordinance and see how far the state statute allows us to push out any new dispensaries from, from our schools. Unfortunately, the state has tied our hands and said that we can't regulate them any differently than we do commercial pharmacies. So, and the establishment of any new commercial pharmacies would also be affected. But I think that that's, that's easy enough dealt with if and when we needed to. So I, I would be looking for, again, consensus to give Ms. Lynn direction to come back, bring that ordinance back to us with information on how far state statute would allow us to push these out from the schools, and hopefully limit the establishment of, of any further dispensaries.
Commissioner Finnegan.
I have some questions. Excuse me as I just put a mint in my mouth, so I'm not choking. You said that we regulate them the same as pharmacies, but it sounds like it's less about schools, but more that we have so many, and this is how we can regulate it? I know in other areas, they said just no more. If we did that, does, is that also related to pharmacies?
Yes, yes. If, if the, the city of Crystal River, and, and I haven't had any lengthy discussions with them about that, but city of Crystal River has banned the establishment of any more, but I believe that that likely, I guess, controls the establishment of any further commercial pharmacies as well, within the city, but that's just within the city, though.
And when you say commercial pharmacies, does that include, I guess that would include the pharmacies inside of a Walgreens?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
You look like you have something to say? Were you going to answer that?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Cannard did a good job with that.
He did.
And you said you're looking for consensus. Do you have a motion? Is this motion done here? Is that incorrect?
I would, I'd make a motion that we direct Ms. Lynn to come back with the ordinance, as, as well as information on, on how much latitude does the, does the state statute give us in distancing, distancing these, these pharmacies and dispensaries from.
I mean, if it wasn't connected to pharmacies, I mean, I would say, you know, make it 100 miles.
I don't know how much latitude the state statute gives us. And there, I, I believe.
Second, by the way.
What's that?
I'm seconding your motion.
All right, very good. There, there may be, and, you know, certainly don't quote me on this, but there may be a little bit of latitude within the statute that would allow us to put some verbiage possibly into our own ordinance. So we'll have to see what she comes back with for establishment of pharmacies, say, within a hospital. You know, because certainly they have, they have their in-house pharmacies. I don't know if that would be, you know, if that would be grouped in together with this, or if the statute says standalone pharmacies.
What about a Publix?
Hmm, absolutely.
And then, honestly, that's the only reason why I'm not, I'm considering not backing it up. I, I'm torn. I understand what you want, and I agree with you. But then I think about growth, where the colleges, you know, as that grows, or, you know, will there be dorms there in the future, and does the Publix want to go there? Are Walgreens? And I'm starting to think about the different areas by the schools. I mean, Publix at Forest Ridge is right by, you know, the school. So it's like, are we shooting ourselves in the foot? That's, I'm just trying to, right now, think of all the schools. And then where would the next school go? Would it go out by the YMCA? And then I'm thinking, where's the development going? So I, I don't, I don't know that it's impacting our children. I think K2 and some of those other things, the legal stuff is. So I, I'm just nervous about, I, I'm trying to forecast in the future, so I'm just kind of in between.
I'd feel a lot more comfortable oppose, not opposing a motion, but asking to come back with more information. I would, I would prefer that before we put a motion on the floor to do anything. I just would like more information back.
And Madam Chair? We also have our legislative retreat this Thursday. I know it's probably an uphill, lot, lot, um, uphill battle with the, you know, money that comes out of the marijuana industry that goes to campaign coffers in Tallahassee, but maybe that's something that we add to the list, that we need more flexibility on that.
I think that's, that's a straight uphill battle.
I figured.
Commissioner Davis, I think nothing ventured, nothing gained. Maybe other people think like that.
Yeah, I'll never forget sitting down with Mr. Oliver when I first took office. I said, so why don't we have strip clubs here? I'm absolutely delighted we don't, but how, how has that not happened? Right? And he said that they were able to basically thread that needle that you are, you can have one here, but you can only have it like so far out in the forest somewhere that no one could see it or go to it, right? So that was the way we stopped that.
We're well off track.
Well, it started with the K two, sorry.
So, so let's, let, let's do, let's do this. I'll rescind my motion.
I'll rescind the second.
And so we just want consensus to direct, uh, Ms. Lynn to bring back more information on how much latitude we do have, uh, in the state statute to try and limit, um, the expansion or proliferation of, of these dispensaries.
I have a question. And Commissioner Barrett.
I have a question. Can you also check if we have already given approval for a development, such as Tuscany? And they're going to be putting in a school, but they're also going to have, uh, commercial. If they wanted to put a pharmacy, but not a marijuana pharmacy, Kim, they put a pharmacy in there for those 5,000 houses, because that's, that's a big development.
What if they put a Publix and it's got a pharmacy?
Or a Publix even, you know, so can you find out information on that for us?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I would just remind you all that it, it's going to require an LDC amendment, so it'll go to the PDC and back to you all eventually, but I can bring the information back to you so that we know how, how to draft those changes to bring it through the process.
Madam Chair, I got one last question for one of my colleagues here. I'm sure that we all heard from, uh, the folks in Homosassa about, um, our ordinance, our golf cart ordinance that does not allow the golf carts, um, after dusk or before dawn. Is that something that, Commissioner Finnegan, that's your district, or you taking the ball to run with that?
Yes, I was actually going to bring that up under my name, but briefly. Um, the sheriff met with the Homosassa Civic Club Monday a week ago. I got, he reached out to me as soon as he left and, um, said, hey, can we get together? I want to, I, I didn't know what it was about. I didn't, the dust to dome wasn't on any of our radars and I didn't know it at his first, uh, reach out. And after that, I started calls, calls. I'm like, I'm meeting with the sheriff, I'm meeting with the sheriff. Yesterday I met with the sheriff. Uh, we are collaborating together. Um, the attorney has not had a chance. The sheriff put together some things. I would like to take a closer look at it. I'm going to get that over to Ms. Lynn tonight or tomorrow. And we'll meet, say what's doable. Something will come back to all of you, the tweaks. The sheriff and I, um, have a good collaboration on this. We, we talked about kind of what he would like to see, what would make, uh, you're never going to make everybody happy. Some people happy. Uh, we talked about some other issues and what we could do. I just need to get with our attorney and talk about what it takes before I bring it to this board. Are there studies? Are there costs? Who pays for the cost? What's the timeline? So I'm not prepared to discuss everything that the sheriff and I talked about because we're still collaborating, um, but when I come back to you, I want to make sure whatever questions that you will have answered, answered. And I think it's easier if you are fielding those, the same thing, the poor sheriff. They, they invited him to come out. They asked him all these questions. He gave him the answers. Then they didn't like the answers, so, um, then I'm getting all of this and I'm like, I don't quite know what's going on yet, which I'm sure you all didn't either.
My phone blew up too.
Yeah, so if you would do what the sheriff, I, I, the sheriff told me yesterday for everyone, I'm meeting with the commissioner. Could you please not show up at the board meeting? I'm meeting with the commissioner. We're working together and I'm asking us all to say the same thing. I, I'm meeting with the sheriff. We're getting with the attorney. It will come before the board and we will work on it.
Perfect.
Thank you.
You yield the floor, Commissioner Kennard?
No, I think I've got anything else.
All right, Commissioner Barrett.
Okay, um, the one thing I do have is a great citizen in Citrus County has passed away. He was a builder of many mansions and lastly, he was the Habitat for Humanity Housing Coordinator for years. His large presence will very, very much be missed by a lot of people. E. George Rousseau was a friend of mine and a friend of a lot of people out there. And I think we should all take a moment and put his family in our thoughts and prayers. And be careful because we have Habitat for Humanity, which needs to keep moving forward. Just because George is no longer here, the person that's now running it needs our assistance to continue with the work that George tried to bring to this county. Thank you.
Commissioner Finnegan.
Um, well, I just shared the Homosassa update, but since last meeting was so long, I didn't give the stats. Just again, a shout out to our veterans outreach with the county, Phil Watson and his team. Uh, May and June, that team helped 784 vets and their families and they did eight outreach services. That means they went into the community and helped veterans. Um, so they, they stay very busy. I should have another meeting coming up soon this month and then have some updated numbers, but just wanted to let you know, um, how busy that team is out there and the good work that they're doing. Thank you.
Um, I just have a couple of things. I had spoke with, um, our attorney Denise Lynn. I feel like maybe we should look at seeing if we can put some guardrails. It's come to my attention that some people are getting ag exemptions on two acre parcels in residential areas and then using that to build a shed without a permit. Kind of, a, a, and I think that's stretching it a bit. So I know that goes through the property appraiser, but I think maybe we need to put some guardrails on things like that. Um, it has no residential component to it. I also spoke with Mr. Howard about, and, and Carl about sending a letter to the sheriff, regarding the enforcement of the heavy truck traffic on Orange Avenue, just making him aware that we've put the signs up. And that's what we're looking for is to reduce the heavy truck traffic. I think it'll only take a couple of times and then the word will get out and it'll kind of stop that. The signs are up. And, um, last week I had, um, the Secretary of Enterprise Florida here, Alex Kelly, and a few of his team members. And we, much to your point, Commissioner Kennard, about, um, industrial development, commercial development, changing our mix of our portfolio assets and, uh, did several things, went around and looked at different areas in the county. And, um, they, I had Steve Bayham from Economic Development with us and Mr. Howard and a couple of other staff members, but, um, they gave some good input. I think there's some monies that are there that we can apply for, for a couple of small projects that'll help. But continuing to look at that and really kind of digging in and, and looking at where they can help us. And that's all I have. Attorney Lynn.
I have nothing, thank you.
Nah, nah, oh, I did want to say one, and, and maybe I can or can't, I don't know, but I, I do, uh, I'm not sure. But Tony brought up, um, about why we would be hearing the, the sandmine and the, the point of it, because they don't have their ERP? It's because they have to get approval from us and then it has to go to the state, correct?
Uh, as, as we are all, uh, we cannot hold up a permit based upon a permit to be granted by another agency. So the timing of it doesn't, we, we can't hold up our things just because they don't have a state permit or another entity's permit. So we have to process according to our rules and statutes that apply to us.
But if we approve it, it gets transmitted to the state, to the different agencies, and then it comes back for a second hearing to us.
The transmittal hearing and then the adoption hearing, but I think he was talking about SWIFMUD. SWIFMUD is not part of that.
Okay.
SWIFMUD is not part of, uh, the review. That's a separate permit.
Okay.
Madam Chair. Commissioner Finnegan.
Thought provoking. Madam Attorney, you say because, and this has happened with IV four is a perfect example. We can't hold up our permits for the sake of another permit. I've heard it a million times. Is that because, is that a state rule or is that our rules? Because if it's ours, we could change it.
I, I wish it was our rule and I wish we could change it, but we can't. It's a state statute, especially with regard to building permits. It's, I, I don't have it off the top of my head, but, um, it, it is a permit that says that the county shall issue a building permit once the applicant, uh, shows that it has met all of the requirements of the Florida Building Code.
But the application, I'll just, any application that's coming before us that may need that ERP or any kind of a development, that's not a permit. So could we, um, wait and make that a prerequisite before we hear it? Is that they, you know, that they have to get the approval from SWIFMUD or the EP or whatever entities are involved?
I know the answer is no.
You know it.
I, I know it's no, but, um, I believe that each entity permitting authority has their own rules and regulations. And so, I mean, I could, you're speaking in the, you know, big picture. Uh, so it would depend on the specific entities permitting requirements. I know the Florida Building Code, from our standpoint, we can't hold up a building permit because of that, but I would have to look at the individual permitting requirements of the different types of entities, agencies to determine, but.
You know what I mean? Because then we'll have, I, I'm not any, anybody specific, just an entity comes before us. They want us to change, let's just say zoning, and then we change the zoning for something, but then it would require, uh, a certain permit, let's just say from SWIFMUD, and it's not allowable for whatever reason, wetlands, I don't know why. But we've already changed that zoning and maybe then we shouldn't have.
I don't know if Eric can help if he knows specifically.
And I ask this because I think people, it's not just like I'm thinking off the cuff. I see, I see at least one head shaking, yes. People wonder that, like, why, why are we doing things before we know the impact? And I, that's why I'm asking it out loud. People want to know, if we don't know the impact, why are we making decisions? Shouldn't we know the impact first?
I, I can get you that information and bring it back to you, but as I sit here, I, I can't answer specifically.
Okay.
Thank you.
Except for the building permit, I know that one.
Either I, I can or, or you can. I, I think the public, they would like to know that. So if we could just, you know, even if it's a quick, on the agenda, five minute from you, I don't know, presentation or the answer. So it's advertised and people can get the answer.
Yes ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, we're back to open to the public. Anyone wishing to address the board, please come forward.
First off, Ms. Finnegan, thank you for that little bit. And it's true, we can't put the cart before the horse, and it's good to know. Which is why, sitting here today, and I came to watch, I wrote down my thoughts as I sat there today, which is very unusual for me. I usually have it in advance. I would like to thank each one of you for the hard, grueling job you do, which involves tedious, long hours. You will never make everyone happy. I can see you take the time to fully investigate all things that come before you and before you make decisions based on research and facts. I can feel that your decisions come from the heart with honesty and integrity. So I just want to say thank you. As far as the quasi, I once stated, if you don't respond, there is no prejudice to either party. Gather information, research on your own, and don't give away your decision of what your decision will be. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Curtis Bryant-Lacanto, um, on the, uh, quasi judicial stuff, um, I would like you guys to look at doing something similar to what St. Augustine did, um, in which they said they, um, proposed that they encouraged the commissioners not to have ex parte communication. Um, there's nothing illegal doing it. You guys can go out and do whatever, talk to whoever, whatever, all those things. The issue is the presumed prejudice of that, um, decision. So look at making it a little bit more difficult, I think, um, with your form instead of doing checklists. Make it to where you have to disclose, you know, summary of whatever it was you guys talked about to discourage people from doing that. Um, I wanted to address the marijuana dispensaries. It appears like it's a way to, uh, limit, uh, businesses. It seems kind of like a government overreach thing to me. Um, if you're going to target specific things about kids and things of that nature, there's other entities. Gas stations sell cigarettes. Tobacco kills more people every year than any marijuana or anything does. Um, alcohol, same thing, um, DUIs, all those things, those are in front of schools. Um, fast food, big one. We're talking about healthy kids, things of that nature. Um, just to put it in perspective, the closest dispensary to a school is 652 feet, and that's the true leave here down the streets from Citrus High School. Next closest one is about 830 feet. That's the Green Dragon in the MRS, uh, Old Public Shopping Center. It's IMS. Um, everything else is over a thousand feet. State law is 500 feet. So they're well beyond the, the state law for that. Um, put in perspective, McDonald's is 350 feet away from Crystal River Middle School. Taco Bell is 162 feet, um, from Citrus High School. CVS, 300 feet from Citrus High School. Sitco, 403 feet from, um, Crystal River Middle School. Yet we're saying that, um, those things are not dangerous to kids and we want to regulate a specific industry. So if you're going to do that, I would challenge you guys to regulate fast food restaurants. Um, we have how many fast food restaurants in Citrus County? They're not high paying jobs, arguably not healthy food, but we, we're not issued with that because parents can choose what they want to feed their kids and things like that. Uh, medical marijuana is highly regulated. You have to have a card to get in the door. You have to go, you know, through processes to get all those things. Kids aren't buying it from the street. You know, they're not walking in, getting in it that way. Um, otherwise, we look at things like oxycodone. How addictive is oxycodone, Vicodin, and things of that nature? Those are legal pharmacies. Those are things sold legally in pharmacies like Publix, things of that nature. Um, but again, we're not talking about that. We're talking about a specific group of things, um, which is probably going to be decriminalized at some point in the future anyway. Um, so I think we're a cart before the horse on that. Um, so there's something to think about for all of that. Thank you.
Hi. I don't, I don't not like you.
Sure feels like it.
Okay, so this is for the, um, ordinance to come back. What set me off, in, in case y'all haven't figured it out, and made me do all the research and all the laws and everything, was the June 27th and, uh, July 8th. And it was the administrative meeting here that set me off, not the quasi judicial. That, that's a different thing when public gets shut down in a quasi judicial. That's over on Jennings and over on that side. I'm zeroed in on this administrative meeting, which is not a quasi judicial meeting. And so the question is, how do you handle quasi judicial things that come up during open to the public in the administrative meeting? So I need, if possible, this thing that you're doing. Thank you so much for bringing this up, whoever, wherever it came from. To differentiate the admin versus the quasi judicial, because this is admin. And at the end of the day, you've got to comply or bring yourself into compliance with the 0115 and 2.49 and the First Amendment here in this meeting, or you have to shut the public down. You can say, you can only speak about agenda items. That would be horrible. So, but, but you have to address this meeting also. Second point, you can't admonish grandma here at this microphone to not talk about something. This is the public, and with all the greatest respect, the public doesn't need to be taught how to. taught how to communicate to the Board of, uh, County Commissioners. Grandma needs to be free to come up here. Uncle Bob and Willie need to come up here and just tell you their heart. That's it. You can't put restrictions on that and you can't say, don't talk about this, don't talk. We would prefer you don't talk about that. No, you, you, you can't, you can't do that. Now, to administrate that, I would remind, uh, everyone here in council that it's 2025. Just take the tape, this wonderful tape with the timestamps and all that, and just tell everybody the open to the public is part of the public record and attorney, 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 attorney. It's your job to go and get that ex parte out of there. I'm done. And so now you don't have to do any form when Grandma comes up here to the microphone. And, um, then the last thing is, there was a question from the, uh, s- someone I can't address in the, in the room. And, uh, Jones versus City of Key West is a real fun one. And, uh, here, the public came up and they were stringently admonished to hush. Can't talk about that. The, the, the circumstance, the, uh, situation, all, all that. And so, but in, in this case, the public refused to stop talking. And the, and the chair had the sheriff escort them out. End of the do- end of the story, First Amendment violation, 35,000 for the speaker. They violated him, they hauled him out, and the council, the city ended up paying the money.
Oh wow.
And so, uh, that's, uh, Jones, City of Key West, so.
Thank you.
And I appreciate you not hauling me out, you know? Have a good day again. Thank you for the hard job.
Thank you.
Hello, To- Tony Ayo again, Beverly Hills. Um, so I wanted to thank you so much for addressing my issue. Um, and as far as the expedite, expedition of business-related, uh, permits and, and stuff for that, for the manufacturing, that's exactly what Cannard was trying to do with the Florida Department of Transit and the sandmine. To, to speed it up. And thank God, the rest of you said, no, 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 we need to slow it down and make sure that we have all the hearings and do what we're supposed to do. Thank God for that. And I wanna thank you so much, Diana Finnegan, for thinking, for relating this whole thing back to Emirunus Four. Because yes, you might have given the permit, but was it a wise choice? Were all the, all the other permits allowed? You know, did SWIFTMUD approve everything? Did, you know, the Florida Department of E- uh, Environmental Protection, did everybody else sign off on a project? So you sign off on it, nobody else did, what's, what's the developer gonna do? So of course he went ahead and did it, right? And now you're getting sued. What are we gonna do? So the point is, yeah, I think we need to take a look at what we're really doing, consider all of the facts. Um, and again, you need to educate yourselves. So I'm kinda concerned about this whole quasi judicial process. I hope that you all just didn't get a stack of emails today and all this information that we provided to the, to Joanna Co to and just get a stack of it and like, okay, today's the day, here you go. Like, I hope you did get that, okay? I hope you had at least two weeks to read up on that and to really inform yourselves as to what is really the serious issues at the hand. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Earlier I was gonna comment on the reefs. In fact, Florida's the only state that doesn't require commercial fishermen licenses to put out reefs. And that's another source of your funding, to put out reefs. I used to fish five miles offshore where all those small rocks are to catch grouper when I was a youngster. It'd be great to see artificial reefs put out by the commercial fishermen to bring that back. They're required to do that in states like Alabama, Mississippi, and Louisiana. The other thing is, I agree with you on the marijuana, but it's a fine line between limiting a business and not limiting and targeting a business. Uh, you know, I, I agree a hundred percent with you, but there's a fine line there. And I thank all of you for your patience and listening to me and everyone else.
For the record, we need your name again.
Thank you.
Say your name again for the record.
Kenneth Ferguson.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? If not, we're gonna close open to the public. And.
I would just like to say thank you to everyone that spoke today. Really good feedback. And I hope you feel that we are always in a, um, always up for continual improvement here.
Well, if there's no other business, we thank you for coming up. We're going to adjourn.